No reports of council committees other than to remind everybody again that we have a budget hearing this Saturday, starting breakfast at seven, meeting starts at nine, lunch is at 11:30, and we'll do as best we can and move through it swiftly. Orders on second reading, would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-32 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-32, an ordinance appropriating $850,000 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund to the revolving loan fund and authorizing the use of said funds as a forgivable loan in connection with the construction of a 48-unit affordable housing project for economic development purposes.
I get a motion and a second to table this to allow for publication.
Don't move.
I got a motion.
Second is Crabtree, second for Mr. Fish, that we table this.
All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
Just like to make the request, Mike, you were building services director, city builder, that make them put later.
Resolution, sorry, which is accompanying resolution that goes with this ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Somebody just got that to make sure you make that motion. Okay, proposed orders 24-0-33, would you read this by title only, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-33, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, amending ordinance number 4099 and ordinance number 5234 to amend the hour of the regular and initial meetings of the common council respectively.
Move for approval.
We got a motion for Mr. Fish, second for Mrs. Hines, council discussion. Mr. Henke.
I realize this is a one-sided argument. I wanted to point out, even as fast as I could get here tonight, it was at 7:02. I would also point out, school teacher retired, personal self-employment.
Mr. Henke, Mr. Henke, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. Thank you very much.
Not everybody, not everybody gets out of work at that point.
That's, that's, that's what, Mr. Henke, not everybody works nine to five, people work three to 11, they work 11 to 7. This is just for the convenience of our workers here in the city, saves money, saves time, it has nothing to do with where any one of us work or are retired. So if your conversation is not going to be germane to that.
Let me rephrase then. What I would like and would approve is if we come to this meeting and if department heads are going to attend, it would be good to actually get some responses to questions that have been laid out. I don't have to make multiple calls to people when we come to this meeting and I see them and I still get no responses.
Again, Mr. Henke, that has nothing to do with.
It does, it's about getting, if it's convenient for them, I would like it convenient for me as I represent my constituents.
All right, thank you, but you're out of order. Is there anyone else? Saying none, open up to the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this? Saying none, return to the council floor, council discussion. Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye. Would you read this by title and do a roll call vote on third reading, please?
Need a motion and a second.
Motion for third and final.
Second. Motion for Ms. Hines, second for Mr. Fish, for third and final, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-33, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, amending ordinance number 4099 and ordinance number 5234 to amend the hour of the regular and initial meetings of the common council respectively, Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Seven to one.
Seven to one.
Seven to one, there we go.
There are no ordinances or resolutions referred to committees, tabled ordinance 24-0-10 will remain table. Would you please read proposed resolution 24-r-45 by title, please?
Proposed resolution 24-r-45, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, waiving non-compliance with the requirement for the timely filing of the annual statement of benefits form and finding SCG acquisitions, acquisitions company LLC, DBA Speed Grip Chuck Company, and Swanee Precision Holdings LLC to be in substantial compliance with the statement of benefits and memoranda of agreement.
I get a motion and a second to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second. By Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Crabtree, public, I mean, council, Mr. Drew.
Good evening, council, Drew Wines, Economic Development. In March 2024, council granted Speed Grip Chuck Company a three-year personal property tax phase in. A waiver of non-compliance was required to approve the project retroactively actively as equipment was installed in 2023 prior to council approval. The new equipment was assessed in May of this year, rendering 2024, page 2025, the first year of their tax phase in. The proximity to the approval date with CF1 compliance led to a situation where CF1 was not turned in. Development Services confirmed the assessment of, of the new equipment in August and, and informed Speaker that they must submit a CF1 and corresponding compliance documents. Speaker submitted a compliant CF1, they are compliant all categories, and we are asking council to approve a waiver of non-compliance so they can receive the benefits they would have received in 2025 and 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Drew? Mr. Henke. Questions for Drew, Mr. Henke.
You're reporting that their C F one went where, was it timely and it just went to county and not us?
Um, it, it was not timely, given the uniqueness of the situation, um, they did not, Speaker did not submit a C F one, um, by May fifteenth, and once we confirmed the assessment of, of the new equipment, we reached out to them and, and asked them to submit a C F one.
So in prior, was the first year last year?
Uh, the first year is this year, the equipment was installed in twenty twenty.
So they didn't know process.
Yeah, given the, given that they approved, um, in March and just the, how close that was to C F one compliance, that, that unique, very unique situation, um, created, created the confusion, and, um, this waiver will correct that.
Okay. Thank.
Any other questions for Drew? Saying none, thank you, Drew. Open up to the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this? Saying none, return it back to the council, any further council discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on this resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Henke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We move on to new business. Ordnances on first reading, would you read proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero dash thirty-four by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-four, an ordinance adopting the operating budget for the twenty twenty-five calendar year, appropriating funds for such purpose and establishing the tax rate for the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be assigned to the finance committee of the whole. Would you please read proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero dash thirty-five by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-five, an ordinance fixing the annual salaries of elected officials of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will go to the finance committee of the whole. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-six by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-six, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for appointed officers and other salaried employees of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be assigned to the finance committee. Would you read proposed orders twenty-four dash zero dash thirty-seven, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-seven, an ordinance adopting the schedule of salaries and other compensation for the police officers of the city of Elkhart, Indiana for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. If there are no objections, this will be assigned to the finance committee. Would you read proposed orders twenty-four?
Of the whole?
All of them of the whole.
Okay.
Would you read proposed orders twenty-four dash O dash thirty-eight, please, by title?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-eight, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number forty-three seventy, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone seventeen twenty-three Oakland Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, from R four multiple, multiple family dwelling district to R two one family dwelling district.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll sign, let's pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-nine by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash O dash thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept a U S Department of Housing and Urban Development grant in the amount of one million fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Fifty thousand dollars for lead hazard reduction building grant, builder grant.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. You have an objection?
No, I just was going to give a short synopsis of what it's about.
That'll happen second and third reading.
Okay.
Thank you. Proposed resolution twenty-four dash R dash forty-seven, this is the one that we asked to be tabled, is that correct, Mr. Huber? Could I get a motion to table this resolution? I got a motion for Mr. Henke, second for Mr. Fish to table. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. There are no vacation hearings of the new business, of the new business. Mr. Henke.
Uh, so as mentioned, um, it really works well, and as we're talking about efficiency of our time, uh, time of staff and department heads, if they're here, as you can look by the minutes, last meeting, there was a question on Middlebury School Systems, uh, someone, a private person had purchased that for development, and yet it's in further decay today. Neighbors are concerned, it, it is more of an eyesore than it had been before, so it would be nice to have an update there. Homes with no permits on Prairie Street, I haven't heard about that, the tattoo parlor unlicensed, um, didn't hear about that. Mike, uh, Huber did give me the update on Freight Street, uh, right at that meeting, so I appreciate that. Andy Jones gave me the update on the question I had regarding aviation minutes, took care of that right away. Still working on the Hunter's Pond and Brookdale Drive drainage issues, um, suggested that we may want to have another public meeting out there since they continue to call and don't seem to be getting a response from city officials that they were looking for. I'm not sure who's representing the learner at this point, um, who the department head is, do I know that person? But nonetheless, uh, there was a question in their minutes talking about, um, the significant reduction in total engagement of thirty-six point nine percent decrease over the quarter, which is huge comparison to prior, and they're talking about that since the city changed a stance on comments on a website or Facebook, that they've seen a real deduction or reduction, and so I just wondered, thirty-six point nine percent is very significant, I didn't know if it translated into a financial or booking decline as well. I think that would be pretty important, but any of us should pay attention to a thirty-six point nine decrease in anything, and that's a pretty significant, uh, drop, I just don't know what it means, and if they truly believe it's because the city changed its policy on that. And finally, those were minutes from August fourteen. They were in this packet. The only other thing that I think Mike can tell me about, um, is that in the redevelopment minutes, Tuesday, August thirteen at four P M, it looks as though we are forwardly exhausting TIF funds, um, A River District, TIF pledge, woodland crossing, uh, re-roofing bids, TIF dollars, and we're just consuming TIF, and we just need to be mindful that those are dollars we will not have available for our future, and as long as someone can tell us what has been encumbered and what remains, that may help us in this budget. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? New business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Crabtree.
Uh, I do want to remind everyone and my colleagues that we are fifty days out from the election, and I would encourage everyone to be a part of the process and serve as an election board, as a poll worker, um, in here in Elkhart County. We have twenty-nine vote centers from throughout the county, so everyone can vote to their nearest one, um, and we need almost, well, probably close to over three hundred individuals to work, so I would encourage everyone, uh, I would challenge my colleagues to work Election Day, I would challenge those in the chamber as well as those listening. It is a holiday, so most peop, places, some places are closed that day. It is a long day, but you do get paid for it. So, again, whatever you do, please keep our process fair, responsible, and free, and exercise your right to vote and work the polls. For those, you can call the election board at five seven four five three five six four six nine.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree, appreciate that, that is important. Okay, reports Board of Work, Mayor Board of Safety, no reports, Neighborhood Association report, Ms. King.
Oh, there is a neighborhood association cleanup in the eight hundred block of Garfield Avenue and surrounding, um, area this Saturday, I believe it's from ten to twelve. Do you have any questions, please reach out to Patty Marino, or you can call me also. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr., so second, so we'll put you in public hearing so we can, once we get to that, you can do that. Oh, your neighborhood, okay, thank you. Step right up. I thought you, take as long as you like.
Don't tell me that. My name is Dwight Weber, I have the privilege of serving as the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association, um, and as I understand.
Who invited you? Who invited you?
By two representatives.
Thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for coming.
And as I understand it, we are one of the longest neighborhood associations in the, in the standing associations in the city. We're grateful for the mayor's emphasis on strengthening neighborhoods and establishing new neighborhood associations. We are convinced that neighborhood associations are the backbone of our community and have and greatly improve the quality of life for our Elkhart citizens. We want to compliment Mayor Robertson for establishing the Neighborhood Association liaison office, and we believe Patty's doing a great job, so from the field, you need to hear that. As an association, uh, we are, uh, our officers are, I'm honored to serve as president, uh, our vice president is Sally Bottemeyer, uh, and even before he was elected, he served as our secretary, Chad Crabtree, and we're grateful for that. Uh, our members at large on the board are Dick Hinson and Tom Mayers, which are two longest-standing, uh, members. Lori Burner and Jameson Charnicki are, uh, two of our members, and in December will elect again, and we're proposing another member of our community, Nick Marks. Um, as an association, we, uh, quarterly meet in December, uh, September, December, March, and June, on the first Tuesday of, of the quarter, and would invite any of you to come anytime, many of you have, and we're grateful for that. Uh, things that we're actively doing now, we are in the process of, uh, identifying our core, our neighborhood core values, believing that as a guiding principle for how we function, and how our, even our Facebook, uh, functions. Uh, we're in the process of filing a five oh one C three, and we believe this will enable us to become a legal, not-for-profit entity, and make it possible to establish not only a bank account, but also apply for potential grants in the future. Uh, annually, we partner with our Mary Daily Elementary School, uh, on their daily dash and block party, uh, we sponsor a neighborhood garage sale, uh, host a Christmas light display contest, so we'd encourage you to drive through in the Christmas season. Uh, three of our families will get prizes from the association, and needless to say, it's a highly sought-after event. Yeah, right, okay. Uh, we also host a Christmas Eve luminary project, which we'd encourage you to drive down Strong Avenue and through our neighborhood on Christmas Eve. Uh, the goal is to, uh, property owners will sponsor the kit, uh, line the sidewalks with these luminaries, and our goal for that night, uh, literally eventually will be all of Strong Avenue, which, we're not there yet, but we will eventually sometime get there. Our hope for that evening is to spread the Christmas spirit of peace on earth, goodwill to all mankind, so it is a delightful time, if you want to walk on Christmas Eve, that's a wonderful place to take a walk, it really does have a sense of peace to it. We host an annual service day where we partner with the city and the Parks Department by focusing on cleaning and beautifying one of our parks in our area. Uh, we also partner with members of our neighborhood as one of them hosts an annual Easter egg hunt, uh, also, one of them is, uh, organizing a mentoring program at Mary Daily where we'll be focusing on reading this coming year. Uh, we partner with Faith Mission and their, uh, Turkey Stampede, which runs through, uh, the Strong Avenue neighborhood, and we encourage our people to, and we encourage our people to be involved in the city activities as much as possible. Each month, we have the privilege of having highlight activities, many times from our parks and other organizations that, uh, our people can get involved with. We also encourage our people to participate with the trick-or-treat that takes place, and if you've been on Strong Avenue on, on Halloween evening, uh, it's, um, gangbusters. It's not uncommon for us to host two to three thousand kids on just Strong Avenue, most, uh, and we, as a result of that, we would ask the, the mayor's office to give some consideration to moving from the six to eight, uh, o'clock time to a five thirty to seven thirty time, and our reasons for this is to take advantage of more daylight, what children's wearing costumes and walking, crossing streets. Most Halloweens are on school nights, and, uh, schools early morning, they're full of sugar anyway, and another half an hour wouldn't hurt. Um, in light of the fact that we'll host a couple thousand kids, we found a number of the younger children tend to fade off, uh, after seven o'clock anyway, and, uh, we're finding a lot of neighbors tend to close down when they've run out of candy, which is long before eight o'clock. So as a neighbor association, we want to tell you thank you for the work that you're doing, we're grateful for the establishment and the ongoing, uh, use of the three-one-one app, we're convinced that it has significantly reduced neighborhood complaints, and I'm sure you want to hear that. It also has increased connection and communication between the city and its citizens, and every month, every time we meet, uh, there's great things that are shared about the three-one-one app. We're also grateful for the number of city department leaders and council members who attend our meetings, and, uh, we're grateful when you do, it's great to have, uh, Latonya King and Chad Crabtree, which he's always at our meetings, but it's also good to have Latonya when she is able to be there. In fact, I can't remember a, a meeting of the Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association where at least one, uh, city department leader and one council member wasn't present, and we're grateful for that. Each quarter, we invite a civic leader to serve, uh, or service agency to speak to our members, we feel that it's a great way to help people become aware of and informed about the many, uh, great resources that we have here in Elkhart, uh, and on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, we want to thank you for your leadership, uh, your hours of selfless service make our city the great place that it is, and we are genuinely grateful for all that you do, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Totally impressive, that is, you outclassed the fifth district by a long shot.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute. All right, calm down, you're out of order. I'm out of order. Well, I'd like to say something good about the Pemaran Neighborhood Association. Now, I'm, you know, the Pemaran Neighborhood Association has been around a while too, and we like it when people outdo us, because it's all for the good of our city, but our, our Neighborhood Association, as you know, we were the area that was directly affected by the tornado, so we continue to meet with neighbors and seeing how everybody's progress is going, we got some good co, construction crews in the area, we've worked with the permit center, they have new magnetic information signs you can put on your refrigerator, they set some aside for our, our Neighborhood Association, but our neighbors just like reaching out to try to get to know, we have some new neighbors moving in, in two different houses, and we're excited about getting them involved. One came from out of town, moved to our neighborhood because they saw, heard it was the best district in Elkhart, and so things are moving forward in the Pemaran Neighborhood Association.
Competition is good, it is, it is, it is, it is, competition is good. Thank you, uh, neighborhood reports. Uh, moving on, privy to the fore, is anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that's not on the accounts, that was not on our agenda tonight, please step forward, step right up, give us your name.
See, I make sure I didn't, um, you know, we'll have any issues with the mic here, but, Jordan Holes, we're here from Surf Internet, just wanted to really stop in tonight, just for a couple minutes, and kind of introduce my new role with Surf Internet, so I am what they call a market manager, and as you can sometimes, you know, find out from internet companies, we're eager to come in and can't wait to get neighborhoods started up, maybe some competition going on a little bit there, but then there's, we quite frankly don't have someone locally to be a face of the company, so that's what I'm here for, I want to be a local face of the company here for the city of Elkhart. I understand that, uh, we have our headquarters in here in, in Elkhart, you may have contacts with Surf already, Gene, our C E O, is very active in the community, but just want to make sure that I'm a resource out to you guys, and I will, um, follow up really with my contact information after this meeting and, and let you know that I'm available. Just a couple updates while I'm here, I'm gonna, I'll give us a, a little bit of, um, you know, attaboys. So we have about sixteen thousand sites, that's, that's homes and businesses in Elkhart, we just passed that recently, and right now, we're working on the north side of Bristol's, um, Avenue, and just a little bit east of Casopolis, in those neighborhoods right now, so. If you guys have any questions, that's, that's really all I wanted to come up with and state.
Make sure if you have any, a card, a business card, or a few of them.
Yes, absolutely.
Make sure Angie gets them.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Curry, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, but Jordan, do you have internet on the south side of Elkhart?
We are always kind of edging out and expanding, so if it, if there's a, um, specific area, I can always check it out for you.
Lusher Street at Hively area.
Yeah, that is under evaluation right now, so we should be not too far off, but I can find out specifically for you and let you know.
Thank you.
So, so tell me if you could, I know you've been to my house, banned strength, sixteen thousand people on at this point, so the speed variable of your internet?
So that's actually one advantage of fiber, um, each resident or each customer has their own line of internet, so it's not a shared service, that is, you know, you have to worry about the bandwidth issues of your neighbor or a couple, your neighborhood's over, though the sixteen thousand number is actually the amount of homes that we have available for service, I wish we had sixteen thousand customers.
I misunderstood.
No, that's okay, and maybe I should have been, uh, should have specified better.
Aim higher.
Yeah. I thought I heard sixteen thousand too, that's like.
I thought you guys did really well.
So sixteen thousand homes, or homes that is available, how about that? Potential, yeah, it'd be great if we were at about a hundred percent, but, sorry about that.
No, no problem, no problem, thank you for stepping up and, uh, make sure you get Angie that information, we, I'm sure we'd like to have it. Is anyone else in the audience? I saw a young lady in the back, would you please? I saw a young lady in the back, would you please come for? Both of you?
Guys can please make sure you're signing on the sign-in sheet there on the clipboard for me.
My name is Rachel Van Alstine, and I'm a local activist.
You're gonna have to speak into the mic.
All right, guys.
And don't be scared, we're all friendly here.
My name is Rachel Van Alstine, and I'm a local activist and advocate, and so I'm here to invite y'all to our first Speak Our Truth rally for child safety and human rights. It's next Saturday, September 20, this Saturday, September 21st, from 12 to 4 at the Elkhart Civic Plaza. This project is a call to action with the mission of deepening our local conversations through social courage by empowering our communities to speak our truth. We are here to co-create platforms of truth-telling for those who are oppressed and otherwise voiceless. In choosing to collectively share our stories, we build unity, we declare love and truth over silence, and we learn that we are not alone through this process. We are a collective of grassroots organizations that have partnered without, intentionally without political or religious agendas. And so, as you can see on the flyer, the Parent Coalition for Child Safety and Wellness has partnered with Rio's Rainbow, Cosecha, and the Nonviolent Medicaid Army Put People First Indiana for this rally. We have a dynamic lineup of speakers and arts and culture performers to learn about what we're really facing here in our community. We have about 16 folks speaking and performing, and the rally's from 12 to 4, but the speakers will be from 1 to 3. We've received so much community support for the rally. We have community providers tabling, we have the fire department coming out, we have bounce houses, food trucks, face painting, kids' activities that are all free for the kids. But really, one of our biggest missions here is to co-create spaces outside of systems versus within them. To be frank, we've already tried to navigate these systems internally, and it's maddening. You quickly learn that these systems are built to oppress, and everyone at some point reaches this wall and are told that's just the way that it is. Some of you came to our March event, which is the two-year anniversary of Rio's passing, and some of the gatekeepers in our community approached us after the event and said, "You're trying to change the things that can't be changed." And we're talking about our children's lives, and we're talking about human rights. And so if we have gatekeepers in our community that believe these things can't be changed, then what are we doing, truly? So this is really about how do we come together as collectives and do the work outside of systems? But we need y'all to be a part of that, even though you're directly within the system, right? And so we challenge y'all to think about how that can be done. How can you use your position and affluence to exemplify the voices of children and the oppressed in our communities? And so we have Rio's Rainbow, who their child died by suicide because of bullying that was known in our school systems, that we know is perpetuated, that we know is happening right now as we speak. We have Cosecha, who's fought for immigration reform and driver ID cards in the state for a long time and still don't have them. We have the Nonviolent Medicaid Army, who advocates for health care for all. All of this is a trickling effect in our community. You can see that very clearly. We have children in our coalition that can't get the medical care that they need because they have Medicaid. They're on six-month-to-a-year wait lists for medical care because of the insurance that they have. And so it really comes down to the bigger question of whose children and what people are oppressed here in our community. I personally was a patient advocate at Elkhart General Hospital for years, and I tracked my cases through the local Medicaid office, and over 70% of my cases for Medicaid were denied in state error. And so these are systems that directly impact our community. And so we have to take a greater look and a closer focus on the systems that are oppressing our people. You want to know why people are leaving Elkhart? Ms. King and I were just at a meeting, and they spoke of how so many folks leave Elkhart. We have to be willing to turn and look at the systems that are oppressing our people. And we're going to have to get uncomfortable, and we're going to have to get vulnerable to do that, and we ask that of y'all, because you are the gatekeepers in our community. And so while I know you have a budget meeting next Saturday, we make our own rules, y'all. Y'all make the rules. You have that power. We determine our morals and our values every single day. So I recommend, and from what I hear, y'all could use a break during next Saturday, that you step out and you hear your community. We'll be speaking from 1 to 3, and I think that it's as important, if not more important, for y'all to hear the truth of the community as it is to determine a budget, right? And on the flyers that you were given as well, there's a red QR code, and we are calling on the state of Indiana to be the first state in the country to issue a child's state of emergency. Because as many of y'all know, again, what we hear is that our hands are tied. That's just the way that it is. If everyone is saying that, then we're going to need everyone to come together to request that the state, to compel the state, institute this child's state of emergency to make children our number-one priority. And so we truly hope y'all will take a break and come hear your community. It'll be a very powerful day, and it'll be first of many.
Thank you.
Do y'all have any questions?
We're just public here, we're just here to listen.
Oh, okay then, all right, thank y'all.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we return it back to the council, close the public hearing, scheduling of committee meetings, there's the Finance Committee of the whole, meeting Saturday, September 21st. We're gonna start at 9:00. Breakfast is from 7:30 to 9:00. Then we break for lunch at 11, 7 to 9, then we break for lunch at 11:30. So Jamie, RCL City Controller, sent out an email if he had questions, he was willing to sit down with you, go over anything he had any concern with before then. So we make sure we're gonna do that. Also, Erin is not here because they're having a baby. They haven't had it yet. Spoke to him before the meeting, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Today is the mayor's birthday, it's his 21st birthday, you know?
Happy birthday.
So happy birthday, mayor, you know? And as we say it, "To you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear mayor, happy birthday to you." Now, you know that that wasn't free, so you know that, right? The other shoe hadn't dropped yet. Also, if I may, Mr. Curry?
I can?
Okay. On Thursday, Mr. Curry will be retiring as one of the greatest employees to ever work I don't know how long it's been, but I was talking to his son, Brent. He said, "You know, my dad started working there when he was, when I was nine years old," he said, "because he was on the road too much, and he needed to be home with us." And so he stopped his trucking career, you know, and became an employee at AEP, and has served us well. I mean, whenever there's an AE problem in the city, I don't call AEP, I call Brent Curry. So I know who to call. This Thursday, can I, between 2 and 4?
1 and 3.
Between 1 and 3 at AEP out on Toledo Road, they will be having a little going away for him. So I would like as many of you as possible to maybe show up and let AEP know what a great employee they're losing, but what a great employee that the city's gonna be have at our disposal now, full-time. He can be a full-time councilman now and do some other things. So congratulations, Mr. Curry, on your retirement.
Thank you very much.
All right, Acceptance of Communications.
Don't move.
Got motion by Mr. Hanke, second by Mr. Fish. Accept Communications, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign, motion carries. Motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Got motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.